Then I will call to order the April 20th, 2020 city council meeting. All counselors are present and we will move to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Okay, so item number three, the rules of order, we follow Robert's rules of order and all other rules that we vote on during our annual planning meeting. I would just like to mention that obviously, given the circumstances, the public is viewing via Facebook spectrum. Also, they can access questions through this site through the Q and A function. So we may be receiving questions as we go through our comments. They can also email to me and I'll be monitoring emails as they're coming in to try to get public feedback. We do know that there is a delay, so we'll try to slow it down as we're seeking public comments. But also, if you're wanting to make a comment on a subject, feel free to send that in once we get to that item, knowing that there is a delay and we can get to those comments as well. So we'll try to make sure we get everybody's comments read and heard during the meeting. Item number four, adoption of the Ellsworth City Council minutes from the following meetings. March 15, 2020, emergency meeting. March 16, 2020, regular meeting. March 23, 2020, special meeting. And then April 2, 2020, emergency meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Second.
You have a motion at second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And what I'll do is I will ask for, even though on these motions, I will ask if, is there anybody dissenting or abstaining just because with the voice, rather than doing the roll call, that way I can capture it so they don't miss somebody that may want it. Is anybody opposed or abstention? The item passes. Item number five, city manager's report. Manager Cole.
Yes, I'll abbreviate my remarks this evening because the bulk of what people want to talk about are in the next item on the COVID discussion. Couple things, the boat launch at Branch Lake is open. We have hired inspectors and I think it opened as of last Saturday. So get out, enjoy the lake. Also, at the special council meeting in March, the council approved no sticker fees for curbside and transfer station household trash bags. It's, I believe, and I defer to the deputy city manager, but I believe that the trash volumes are running about twice the normal rate, Tammy. Yes, that's a yes, and so.
Yes, that's correct. Sorry, I was trying to unmute.
And.
About, yeah, 15 tons over what we usually do.
So people are utilizing the service, which is great, but we do want to remind residents that this is for household trash that can go in a trash bag. It's not for bulky items. It's not for debris and limbs and iconic items, that type of thing. But you're welcome to put out as many bags as you'd like of good old household trash. Those are my items tonight and move on now to the COVID discussion.
Okay, so item number six, COVID-19 update on city response and discussion on needs of the community going forward and recovery efforts. I'll just start by just sharing that I've been on several calls, almost weekly calls, with manager Cole. Jenna Richards has been on several of those with the Chamber of Commerce, Heart of Ellsworth. Counsel Grendel attended one of those calls. And it's all been really to listen to the business community in terms of how this situation is impacting our local businesses to understand from their point of view where they stand, to listen to their ideas that they have and just to gather that information. So as this situation moves forward, we can bring some of the voice of the businesses to our meetings. And we certainly, when we get to the budgeting process, that's going to be a need. We're going to continue to participate in those meetings and really there to listen. I want to really thank Jenna and manager Cole. They've done an excellent job in terms of being responsive to the community, really listening to the needs, setting up the website, reaching out into the community. And I'll have them talk a little bit more about some of that work. But really are engaged about putting resources to help the residents and really trying to be as creative and responsive as possible within the extent of what the city can do. Obviously, there's constraints in terms of what's available for the city in a crisis like this. But the city does play an important role and I think they've done a really nice job in terms of opening up that communication, being willing to listen and respond to those needs. So I'll turn it over to you, manager Cole, and have you talk a little bit about what you have been up to and where that's gone. And then we can do a broader discussion.
Sure. Well, as you all know, this is about the two R's, which are response and recovery. And you kind of have to run a barrel of tracks. On the response side, the city, as you know, has gone into working remotely where appropriate. The frontline troops, obviously, police, fire, public works, can't work from home. But where we can, we are. The staff from the onset, we were doing daily management briefing calls to make sure we're all connected from our remote locations and all focused on the emergency things that needed to be done, but also the day-to-day things as well. We've stepped that down now to two or three times a week because we're learning our roles. We're operating through the Zoom world. Also, as Chair Hamilton noted, we've been on a number of calls with different groups. One of them is Northern Light, Main Coast Hospital. We've had, we've instituted a weekly call with the hospital, Hancock County EMA, Maine CDC, and the ambulance service and others to make sure we were all talking about sharing resources and what needs to be done. Last week, our folks went out with the hospital folks to sites at the YMCA and the schools in case an overflow or search facility is needed. And those discussions, hopefully it's not, but if needed, that planning is well underway. Today, Chair Hamilton and I spoke with Dana Connors, who's the president of the Main Chamber of Commerce and Industry, because we are looking out over the horizon on the recovery front as well. Because at some point, we are going to reopen. How that will happen is to be determined. There are discussions going on all over the country, how different states are going to handle this. And, you know, no two states or regions, I suspect, are going to be the same. So we're trying to get out ahead of this. Jenna Richards, our economic development director, has worked with our local partners, the Chamber, Heart of Ellsworth, state groups, the Small Business Development Center, others to make sure we got the right information to the right people on the right resource at the right time. And if you go on our website, there's a wealth of information on there. But at tomorrow, this morning's management team meeting, we talked about taking that a step further. Because you can, despite how hard your efforts are to get information out there, there are always those that fall between the cracks or just aren't watching for the information at the right time. So our team of folks, we're going to kind of put our own call center, if you will, together and reach out to businesses, particularly small businesses in the Ellsworth area. Not to be experts on everything that's out there, but to point them in the right direction, get their questions to feed back to Jenna and other troops within the city and just make sure we're reaching out fully to understand what their challenges are, point them at the right resource and just show them that we care. Hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, we'll be phasing in reopening and recovery efforts. And this is obviously much larger than just the city of Ellsworth. We're a grain of sand in a global desert. Yeah, this is affecting everyone around the world, markets and such. But the solutions are going to come locally and it's going to come through teamwork. And I want to thank Jenna Richards and other members of our management team and the support of the council and council chair Hamilton in particular has made himself available. Whenever I've needed him, we've got to know each other in a way that probably never would have happened. We talk constantly and text and he's been available whenever we need him. And his knowledge of the medical industry has been very helpful. So, and I, also other counselors have reached out. We all care about our community and want to do what we can do. So that, in a nutshell, is where we're at at the moment. And Jenna, I don't know if you wanted to add on the resource front and what you're seeing through your partners.
Sure, so just one update, I think since the last meeting where I talked about the resources page, we did make the community bulletin board with the help of our awesome IT staff, more usable, more user-friendly, has a better look to it. And we also got some other staff involved to help us update it. I'll still be the point person if there's people in our community that want to be added to the bulletin board. I know that the library is going to be starting an effort to try to see who's making masks in our community and to hopefully set up a system to get those masks out to those that need them. So that'll be part of the community bulletin board soon. But like I said, we tried hard to make that look better and it's still a work in progress as more becomes available. But we're happy to field any questions. I know today I've been getting fielded a lot of questions about, you know, small business. What does it mean? Still, what does it mean to be essential? What is nonessential? If I'm nonessential, what does that mean for me? What can I do to try to be that in-between where you're still able to be somewhat open for business, but you're adhering to the state order? So I'm happy to be that source of information. If I don't know the answer, I will certainly try to help. So, and I know our staff is there and I can channel out to them as well if there's any questions that I don't know the answer to.
And if I could add to that, Jenna, business is going on at City Hall. Matter of fact, there is a planning board meeting, Zoom meeting scheduled for May, what is it, Jenna?
Six.
May 6. And on that agenda are 53 new housing units, two projects, and two solar projects. I believe all these projects in total is somewhere in the range of $10 to $12 million. And our staff has been working with the applicants, the engineers, to work through the details. And the planning board will go on. And it's at least one positive sign within everything going on right now. And so again, I want to thank Jenna and her crew, you know, for keeping things running and all of our people. You know, they've done a great job of keeping services flowing.
Counselors, what questions, comments do you have in terms of, this is a pretty open item and obviously fairly significant, so.
I was wondering if it's possible to request real numbers, real-time numbers from the CDC. I know that we get the in-state numbers reported, but is it possible to ask them to at least let us know the number of out-of-state cases that we have? I know that when they do a test, if it's not a resident of Hancock County or a resident of Maine, that the positive results are reported to the state or county in which the patient actually lived, not where they're tested. And so I'm wondering if we can get some real numbers from the CDC as to how many actual positives we have versus what is reported for our area.
We have a Zoom call scheduled for Thursday, so if not sooner than that, I can ask Al May, who's the, from Maine CDC, who's our rep, who's been participating in our calls and see if that data is available.
I will say one of the, of, I use the term concern, is that there is a lack of communication between the state system talking with municipalities and a forum for that, which is something that I would like to see. I think it's important to have the voice of the different communities across the state as decisions are being made, with understanding that this is a complex issue and CDC is in the role of looking at the data. And I understand that, and the governor, certainly, she has her hands full. But there has been and there continues to be a lot of different points of connection. And that's one of the areas that I've been talking about and asking questions about is to create that more of a direct link between the senior leadership in the governor's office and municipalities at the local level. And when we spoke with some of the businesses, that's, that's part of their concern too, is being able to have a voice, being able to identify what do they need to have in place as we start to look at recovery. And that innovation in terms of what are they going to do and can do for public safety as things go forward. Without that voice, it leaves a lot out there of unknown and speculation. So that's one of the things that I've been encouraging people to do is to raise that question, to get their ideas to Augusta because it's going to be very important. Not every community looks the same with this issue. And when you look at data, you can look at that in many different ways. That's why it really requires a combination of voices to really sort through that as decisions are about to unfold. Counselors, any other questions?
I would like to look at, when we do start reopening businesses, maybe a business forum where we can educate business owners on some of the additional steps that they could take to prevent the spread so that we don't get a second wave. Ellsworth's been very good at mitigating the first wave. But once we do open everything up, there's the potential for the second wave. So perhaps instead of shutting everything down like we have or like the state has, perhaps just a little extra education as to, you know, how frequently should employees wash their hands? How frequently should we sanitize surfaces? What additional steps can be taken to prevent a second wave?
And also that, that piece about knowing what, and so this was asked today, I had a question on the CDC update. What are the goalposts? What, what are the points at which we can start opening businesses, start relaxing some of the restrictions that are out there? That hasn't yet to be defined, been very broad. And so that's something that would be very helpful to know and businesses are looking for that. And we all know that the challenge is we're running into a place where businesses are going to close permanently. People's jobs, we have a lot of people in the community who are hurting because their jobs have been lost. The businesses are very much on edge. And I think we certainly, as a council, made the decision to look at public safety and made decisions in our last meeting based on where the data was at and based on what everybody said we were doing was flattening the curve. And I think we still, when we look at the data now, it starts to point to a different place for us and an opportunity for us. And I get concerned that that gets missed. So I think we have to have that balance and that's what we need to be talking about, I think, in terms of just helping is striking that balance. Public safety and starting to reopen things. It is a balanced point. The further we get out, the more critical it becomes. And so I think that's part of our job is to also be talking about those things, deferring obviously to the CDC, that's their role. But I think we should have a voice and represent the voice of the community. Counsel Blanchett, did you have something? I thought I saw you.
The only thing that I would add to that, you might also consider, when businesses begin to reopen, having the city get out of the way. The businesses and the business owners know exactly how to run their business. They know what's needed, they've heard from the customers. And I don't want to get in their way of getting their business back up 100%.
Counsel Miller.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to get in their way either. I don't think we will. I think, I'd like to thank the Heart of Ellsworth for having that community forum every week for the businesses and for everybody that's able to attend, that you've been attending. I think it's great and the communication from both city manager Cole and Chair Hamilton has been phenomenal. So I think we're going to do a good job.
Any other comments? I'm looking up, there's a couple of comments come in. So. Okay, so the question, and why is it not mandatory for police to wear personal protective equipment or following CDC guidelines on every call, knowing the dangers of neglecting this equipment? And then, wait, there we go.
I believe Chief Mosher's on the call.
Yes, he just unmuted, so it's all yours.
I am here. The protective PPE, was known as PPE, has been in scarce resource throughout the state. The priority is going to healthcare workers. We have provided what we do have. We have a small cache, if you will, of supplies, which we have assigned to individual officers. And we have information that comes from our dispatch when we have contact with individuals in the community who potentially may be infected with COVID. And in those particular instances, our officers have been instructed to dawn their PPE and utilize that resource. We have drastically reduced the amount of contact we have with the community. And so in order to preserve the precious PPE that's available, our officers have been given the option, if they feel that it's necessary to wear PPE or for their own personal protection, they choose to do that. They certainly have the ability to. And we've provided the resource for them to do that. We have not made it mandatory for them to do that because until recent, there was little to no actual scientific proof out there that wearing a mask really did much of anything as far as the, anything below the N95 mask. So as we go forward, as if we were to see an uptick in our community, I think that it's probable that officers would become more likely to wear masks for their own protection and their own safety. But at this point, we've left it up to them to make a personal decision as to whether they feel it necessary whenever they are out in public to wear a mask. As we do the general public, we don't enforce the general public wearing masks when they're out in the community, nor do we do that for our officers at this point.
Thank you, Chief Mosher. I would also add, just in terms of without getting into a lot of details, the whole issue of PPE, there's, there's different types and different recommendations about what type you wear and under what circumstances. So not all PPE is the same and the N95 masks are very different. They're used for very specific purposes versus having a mask, a surgical mask, a cloth mask, all of those different things. There's, there's gowns, there are gloves, and there are certain circumstances by which that is warranted and talked about. So it's, it's a bigger question. We've all started to use it generically to say PPE as though we're talking about the same thing. And it's not, and certainly Counsel Kaplan could explain it in greater detail than I can. But it wouldn't be appropriate for the police to be fully gowned or necessary as it would be working in a hospital setting.
Without a doubt. And there are, I have some extra N95 masks that I can give to the police officers if they need them. I was lucky enough to be able to get some online for them, as well as gloves and things to cover your head. It's critical to do so. You know, I can, due to HIPAA laws, I cannot elaborate. But it is vitally important that they do protect themselves for every patient, every potential patient or every potential contact every time. And without going into too much detail, I just know that it is vitally important. And a N95 mask is the standard to protect against aerosolized particles. Whereas if you're just looking at outdoor potential exposures within several feet, a regular cloth mask, although not ideal, will provide some protection. And surgical masks are not much better than the cloth mask. Respirators, they are not the things that everybody's looking for in the hospital. Respirators are actually an N95 mask with a face covering. It's an actual respirator that you wear on yourself, not something that you treat a patient with. This is to be a lot of confusion between respirators and ventilators. But definitely a cloth mask for the general population if we're not getting too close. Also, N95, just the white ones that you can get from Home Depot for working in toxic environments, those will provide a little bit of protection as well. The big thing about N95 masks for anybody coming in close contact with people, such as healthcare providers and police, as you know, can come in close contact with, with people, is that it has to be fit-tested. Small, medium, large, yeah, there's standard sizes, but you won't know what size actually fits your face that is a tight covering where it has to be fit-tested to see if you can taste through it. So, but beyond that, I do have about 25 of those N95s just from the developer.
I just would like to add, this is Glenn, the police chief. We have fit-tested all of our officers to the N95 masks that they currently carry with them in their patrol cars. And we do have backup masks and face shields as well that have been issued. And they do have that equipment with them.
Do you have anything to sanitize somewhere?
To sanitize the N95 masks or the face shields?
Yeah, the N95 mask.
We, so the instructions that we give the officers is to cover the N95 mask with a surgical mask. And that's the CDC instructions that we've been given. And by doing that, we've been told that we can reuse those masks up to five times and unless they get fluid or. And unless they get fluid or something like that, that would compromise the mask. But we don't have any capacity or ability to decontaminate the, the used masks. No, we don't.
All right. Any other counselors have anything on this issue? Looking around the screen. All right, seeing none, then we will move on to the next agenda item. Committee report. Any council updates on committees? I know we haven't had many meetings. I would just use this opportunity to talk about, obviously, the Capitol Planning Committee has not reconvened. And when we do, it will look very different than I think where we were headed in the first place. And I know the budget is being, we looked at, going back to department heads to prioritize. So that process is underway. One of the things that we do need to do, however, is to set up some budgeting meetings and start that process. Originally, I think we were looking at next week, we were going to get underway. I think we can probably hold off until May, but we certainly need to start that process. So if everybody's okay with it, what I thought I'd do is work with Manager Cole and come up with some proposed dates, see if that works for scheduling. Obviously, if we are still unable to connect in person, we'll do it by Zoom. But we really should at least start that process, get it underway. And lots of, it's going to be a moving target with the budget, but we really should start that process. And if no one has any objection, manage to vote.
Yeah, I just want to make the point, the, as you know, probably heard, the governor moved the primary election date from early June into mid-July. And in discussions with Superintendent Higgins, the school understands that its election will be moved to coincide. So normally, under a normal process, Tammy would be starting you out, as you said, next week and going through early June. And usually, the school is one of the first things up because it needs to go out to vote. This year will be a little bit different because the, the school vote won't go out till, I believe, July, is it 14th or 15th? Mid-July anyway. So it is a little bit different this year. You're not going to have to push the school budget out for us ahead of the rest of the budget, probably be done in tandem.
Okay. All right, then moving on to citizens' comments. So this will be a point where we'll take it slow to make sure that with the delay that we can hear from individuals. And there are some individuals that have called in that will be able to speak as Jason puts them through.
Hello, this is Representative Nicole Grahowski. Hi, good to see you all. Sorry that you can't see us all, but thank you for convening this meeting in such a helpful way for us to participate. Two things I wanted to mention. The first was in relation to the previous conversation with the communication between the city and the state. And I wanted to just comment that Senator Lukini and I have been communicative with the heart of Ellsworth group, with the chief. You all, I certainly pulled a lot of opportunities.
Nicole, you're fading out.
I think it might be because some folks aren't on mute, so it competes. I mean, like when somebody's dog barks, it barks over me talking, I think, is how it works. Dale, you're muted now.
There, I think we're set, so go ahead.
Well, I was just trying to say that, that I certainly will try to continue to provide a connection between the city and the state. And I appreciate that I know that Manager Cole has been on conversations with the Commissioner of the Department of Economic and Community Development. So I hope that that has felt like a productive conversation because I think that's probably the best avenue to communicating with the executive branch in general. So I'm sorry if some folks haven't felt as connected, but we are trying to stay connected with the community. The second comment I wanted to make was to invite Ellsworth residents to join us, other residents and the Ellsworth Green Action Team in participating in a modified version of roadside cleanup this year. Thanks to the city council making the trash pickup free through the end of the month, we're encouraging folks to take the right precautions and to remain physically distanced, of course, from others, to wear proper protection, gloves, et cetera, as I hope you would do anytime you're picking up roadside trash. But now is a great time before the shrubs and grasses come back to pick up the trash and really beautify our city so that when we can welcome visitors back, we will be clean and beautiful and proud for everyone. So thank you for making this opportunity available. And I encourage anyone that wants to, to join those of us that are already picking up trash till the end of the month. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
So Nicole, just a question comment. So I, the reason I just take a little bit of issue with the communication piece is that the governor is certainly on many calls with the Vice President and President at the federal level communicating. And she would expect that to happen. The governor is on calls with neighboring states, and he would expect that to happen. The CDC, state CDC, is on calls, sets up calls with certain constituencies on a regular basis. I just think there's a missing piece that there, that at the state level, there isn't a consistent call from the executive level with the managers and leaders of municipalities across the state. And I just think that that's a missing piece. And I think that it's an appropriate request so that there's really better communication. If the governors weren't able to have conversations with the Vice President, you would certainly hear that. Should be no different in the state.
Thank you. I can appreciate that, and I will do my best to pass on the message. I'm not sure if Ellsworth's part of the Mayor's Association, but I know they have been talking with the governor. And, and I'm not sure if you are part of that or not, but.
No, that's, that's a group of only nine cities and most southern communities, with the exception of Bangor. That's a very limited base.
I'd like to just say thank you, Nicole, instead of what I said before.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And Nicole, I also want to say thank you because you and I have corresponded on this. We've had many conversations. You're very responsive. My comments aren't directed at you, but I know you have the ability down there to pass along concerns. So I appreciate your willingness and availability recently to hear of these, these types of comments. Manager Cole.
Likewise, I would add to that. I've gotten phone calls from both the representative and the senator, and they both reached out on numerous occasions. And Nicole, Jan and I will be participating in the commissioner's call on Wednesday. And we're, you know, we, we're very anxious, like most communities, to get, start phasing from the response phase into the recovery phase when that safety allows it to happen. So look forward to the discussion on Wednesday.
Great, glad to hear you can join, and I'll join as well.
Right. Are there other citizens in comment? I haven't seen any come in on the Q and A or email. Just going to pause a minute, see if there's anybody else.
Check Facebook.
And I would say if you are commenting on Facebook that you intend to, that you would like to have directed here tonight, that's not a forum that we're monitoring. Let's see, one has come through from John Stein. What can businesses do to help get involved with trash pickup, et cetera? Nicole, are you still there?
I'm here. I'm not sure. Oh, I'm unmuted. So you own bags, but you are welcome to participate like anyone else, that anyone can bring trash to the transfer station, which is now open Tuesday, Friday, and Saturday, I think, eight to four. If you don't have a driveway where the trash would normally be picked up. But I think if you check the trash pickup schedule, most roads that have businesses probably are, most businesses are on roads that there is pickup, I would guess. But you can join like any other resident, and we would love for the help.
Thank you, Nicole. All right, I don't see, oh wait, here we go. John said, thanks, Nicole, and counsel. A question for our heart of Ellsworth. Chris Rector, Regional Rep from Angus King's office will be on the weekly check-in with Heart of Ellsworth at noon on Friday, the 24th. Okay, I do not see anything else. So we will end that item and move on to presentation of awards. So as Larry moves back into view here. So one recognized Larry Gardner for 20 years of service with the Ellsworth Assessing Department. I tried to get Larry to show up here, and I was going to shake his hand and everything, but apparently we can't do that. So he's, I'm just kidding, we weren't really going to do that. So he's there, and thank you, Larry, for that's a lot of years of service to the city, and we absolutely appreciate a lot of work, tough work. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to work for the city of Ellsworth. A lot of good people in Ellsworth, and I've got to meet a lot of good people during, during my 20 years. And, and I, I wouldn't want to work anywhere else. Thank you.
That's your assessment, Larry, right?
Somebody mute Manager Cole's line. And then Penny Weinstein for 10 years of service with the Ellsworth City Managers Department. Manager Cole, you might want to speak to that.
Yes, Penny is accepting this in absentia, appreciates it very much.
And Larry, Nicole passes on. Congrats, Larry, and thank you. And also to Penny, too.
I will pass that along. If she's not watching, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised if she is.
Thank you, Penny. Okay. Unfinished business. Council order number 121905. Remove the request of the fire chief to purchase fire engine and loose equipment through the Houston Galveston area's council for a purchasing program with the dealer vendor being Greenwood Emergency Vehicles. It was originally tabled to December 16, 2019, regular council meeting for 90 days, and then tabled again at the March 16, 2020, regular council meeting.
Move to remove it, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second? Any discussion? Anyone, I'll start with anybody abstaining? Anybody opposed? All in favor?
Aye, Captain.
That's right. Motion passes. All right, item number 11, council order number 032004. Request to approve a one-year extension to the commercial lease agreement with Michael Harris, DBA Harris's Harbor Side Takeout or Vending Concession Stand at the Ellsworth Harbor. This was tabled at the March 16, 2020, regular council meeting.
I heard a rumor, Michael, you're going vegan.
That's quite a rumor. Unfortunately, it's unfounded, but.
Damn.
I do offer vegan options. Salads and things of that nature.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request for the extension of the commercial lease agreement with Michael Harris. Second.
We have a motion, a second? Any discussion? Seeing none? Any abstentions? Anybody in opposition? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes, understanding that he's vegan. That wasn't in there, Mike.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Mike.
Hey, everybody, have a great night.
Thanks, Mike. Item number 12, public hearing in action on proposed amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinance, Chapter 3, Harbor Ordinance. This was tabled at the March 16, 2020, regular council meeting. The public hearing was not held at that time. So what I will do is I will open the public hearing now to give people time to get in if they want to comment. And now turn it back to the council for discussion while we wait. Mark, do you have any, any information you want to share or?
I can answer any questions you have about it. The reason this was brought forward is that as a small harbor with a lot of community activity in the harbor and Harbor Park, we do not feel like we can accommodate houseboats and the like.
I don't see any public comments coming in. Give it another minute. Any counselors have any questions?
I'm in support of the the idea that we don't need houseboats and the craft that people are living on.
I was under the assumption that this was just for houseboats that were going to be rented out. This is for all houseboats. And you're talking like a specific type of houseboat, not a live aboard sailboat, for example, from what I understand.
That is correct.
Any public comments yet?
No public comments. So I will close the public comments. There a motion?
Move to approve as written.
You have a motion? You have a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none? Anybody abstaining? Anyone objecting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're going to get a different response from John all night. This is good. All right, item 13, public hearing in action on proposed amendments in additions to Chapter 56 Unified Development Ordinance, Article 3, zoning districts, Article 14 definitions, and Article 8 performance standards. The proposed amendments will create additional categories and allowable uses in Article 3, Section 307, Table of Land Uses, create additional Section 307, Table of Land Uses, create additional entries in Article 14 definitions, and will add the following sections to Articles and Performance Standards. Section 823 Solar Energy Systems, Section 824 Energy Storage Systems, and Section 825 Facility Operations, Maintenance, Decommissioning, and Abandonment. This was tabled at the March 16, 2020, regular councils meeting. The public hearing was not held at that time. With that said, I will open the public hearing again to give people a chance to put forward any comments that they might have and then turn it over to the council as the comments come in.
Chair Hamilton, would you like me to give a brief rundown about what is being proposed?
Yes, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, good evening, Jana Richards, Development Services. Just a brief background on the proposed amendments. So we began research drafting these proposed amendments in the fall. We reviewed other state model ordinances, Massachusetts and Vermont both have model ordinances at the state. We also reviewed other municipal ordinances in the state of Maine that have either been drafted or recently passed. Toward the early winter, we workshopped the proposed ordinance amendments with staff, particularly with members of our technical review team. So fire, police, public works, code enforcement, we're all able to review these and all be on the same page with what then went before the planning board. We brought these before the planning board for a public hearing and review at their January and February meetings. We made adjustments to the proposed ordinance based on feedback from the planning board. After our second meeting where they made the recommendation to council, we had the proposal reviewed by the city's attorney and he came back with very minor adjustments. To give you information about the proposed amendments themselves, it divides solar energy systems into three categories by size. So you'll see that there's definitions for small, medium, and large-scale solar energy systems. It also distinguishes between those systems that are standalone, such as like a larger scale solar farm, and those that are accessory to extract a structure or existing structure or proposed structure such as a home use. In your packets, you'll see that there's a proposed table of land uses. This outlines which size solar energy systems are allowed in each of the city's zoning districts. So you'll see in the downtown and neighborhood zones, only small-scale systems are being proposed. In the commercial, urban, industrial, business park and rural zones, all sizes are being proposed to be allowed. I just want to make it clear that each application that is submitted for a solar project would be expected to go through the same level of review as other major and minor site use development plans that come in. That includes standards for parking, lighting, traffic, street design, fire protection, stormwater, etc. And then on top of that, each application would also be subject to the proposed performance standards that are in your packets, particular for solar energy systems. These standards address the unique characteristics of solar projects. They also require additional safety measures and standards for operation, maintenance, decommissioning, and abandonment. So that is a general high-level overview of what is being proposed. Happy to answer any questions and I believe Dwight Tilton, who is the code enforcement officer, is also on the line and can answer any questions as well.
We have a comment from Representative Grohasky as a comment.
Hi again. I just finally had a chance to review these ordinances this afternoon and I wish I had taken the time to do so sooner, but I think you guys have done a great job with the definitions. I just had a few questions about the Chapter 56, Article 3, 307, the Table of Use Regulations. Excuse me. I wanted to check so the accessory storage and accessory solar, those are not limited in any way by zoning.
So the accessory uses are allowed, they're considered as part of the principal use for zoning purposes? So if something is an allowed use within that zone, then, then the solar energy system would be accessory to that use, so it would be allowed if the principal use is allowed.
I see. The question that I had is, in particular, the standalone storage definition. It defines that chemical batteries are a type of energy storage system that is installed as a standalone use?
So this is, oh, sorry, keep going.
Well, my question is, there's a lot of places where the chart shows that medium-scale and large-scale solar is allowed, but that standalone storage is not allowed. And so if you're using chemical storage in association with a solar installation, is it standalone?
No, it becomes accessory too. So if you have a, let's say, large-scale solar energy system being proposed and they're using batteries as a energy storage system to be able to store some of that energy, it's considered an accessory use. It's because what we're trying to decipher between is the fact that the, the use that is going to be more prominent is what you are, what you are allowed to do. So if the solar energy system is the more prominent use, where you're actually generating the power, then that would be the principal use and then the energy storage system then becomes accessory to that use.
Thank you. And that, I think, makes sense from a practical standpoint as to how developers are installing these systems. My question is, it says to be considered as accessory, ESS shall be designed with appropriate storage capacity to serve the principal use and not the electric power grid. But if the principal use, if the whole reason is to serve the electric power grid, I'm just concerned that the language might not be clear enough there.
So essentially, what we're trying to decipher between is if you're coming with an energy storage system, like a battery farm, that would feed the grid, whereas in this case, the solar energy system is going to feed the grid. The batteries are just, are storing some of that power, but it's not going directly into the grid. It's a, it's a function of that solar energy system or the solar farm.
I think just as long as you guys have had that in mind and you checked out this definition with other experts, it's probably fine. I just wanted to make sure that was the case because that's what we're most commonly seeing happening is a paired system as opposed to a storage farm.
Yeah, that's what, we're aware of that and that's why the energy storage system standalone is only allowed in, you know, two zones, being proposed to be allowed in two zones, whereas the energy storage system accessory would be allowed wherever the principal use is allowed. And so our, our thought is that if the solar energy system standalone is allowed in that zone, then you could have the accessory energy storage system as part of that same system.
Thank you.
Just pause for a second, Jason, would you mind just telling people how they can access the Q and A site? That question came up.
Yeah, so if you go to our website, ellsworthmaine.gov, right on the front page, there's a post about how to participate. In that post, there's a link to the Zoom meeting, which is where the Q and A is happening here. You can also just go to the website, ellsworthmaine.gov/contact and fill out the contact form. You can send a question or you can also send us a phone number and we can call you and you can participate that way.
Thank you, and I would say that I have a new appreciation for air traffic controllers. I don't know, they pay attention to everything. Council Kaplan.
I can't hear her.
Council Kaplan, we can't hear you.
There, I'll unmute my cell phone then. So if a private owner wants to install their own standalone unit and they live in a neighborhood or they live in shoreland, is this restricting what they can and can't do with their own property?
Oh, so if you live in the neighborhood zone, you would be allowed to have a small-scale solar energy system standalone. In the shoreline zone, it would be considered a commercial or industrial use. We, the shoreline zone is a separate article that we have to get approval through the DEP if we make any amendments to it. So right now, we're keeping it as being a commercial or industrial use within the shoreline zone and it would fall under the standards regulating those uses within the shoreline zone.
And that limits the amount of power that they can actually generate within a neighborhood zone, for example? Let's say you own 10 acres that is still in a neighborhood zone and is this limiting how much you have the ability to utilize your own land for your own purposes? And maybe you do want to sell it back to the grid, but now because of this zone, you're not allowed to do so? I mean, it's a person's private property. As long as they're not damaging their neighbor's property, I don't see why we are restricting what one person can or cannot do with their own property.
That's part of land use zoning, we have to, you know, regulations are being proposed so that there's health, safety, and welfare precautions taken into place. You know, we're, we are allowing it, it's just not on a larger scale as other places that have more land to be able to deal with there.
But doesn't that benefit industry over private owners?
I don't, not really sure I see it that way.
Other councilors? Any other questions? Waiting to see if the individual who was trying to get in is going to come in or not. So I'm gonna call one more chance for the public, either like popping into the Q and A or sending an email with your question, comment.
This is Nicole Grohasky again. I wondered, Jana, if you could explain with the energy storage system standalone, why some of the zoning types were excluded? Where I look at the zoning map and some of them are, you know, near the dump over here or on Route 1, where there's quite a bit of already industrial feeling development.
That's right, so the thought behind the energy storage systems came a lot from the fire department and Inspector Hany. They are more intensive uses, they do pose more of a safety hazard. At this point, the determination was made to limit them to more industrial zones, like the industrial part and the business part. And then as more, you know, if we see one of these, and that is stationed near where they could connect into the grid as well, that land in that area. From a practicality standpoint, the idea is that, you know, we would start on a more conservative side and then seem to be working okay, there could be potential to then allow that use in other zones.
My concern is that a lot of the land right near the electric substations is actually in the urban zone. And that would be the best place to cite standalone storage. It's urban and rural, like right near the Marriavel Road, where there's a substation behind the dump.
Right, just at this point, the idea was to try to concentrate it in one area of the city and not, I mean, the urban zone is throughout the entire city, it's not just concentrated in one area. So the idea was to try to concentrate it from a safety standpoint.
Yeah, I can, I can definitely respect that and respect where the fire department's coming from. My concern for the city is that those are going to be the most profitable places for developers to come and if they are being restricted by zones as opposed to delineating new possible areas, that they won't come to Ellsworth and will lose that possible development and tax revenue. And we have three substations in a close proximity to each other.
Understood. I think, you know, I'm going off the recommendation of the, the fire department, who are the ones who have to deal with the National Fire Code. And there are NFPA standards regarding energy storage systems and from my understanding, concentrating them at this point would be best for the safety of residents of the city.
Do not see any more comments from the public. As I say this.
There is a question.
So from Kristen, "Are there any considerations currently to expand broadband in the city? If so, where we are seriously struggling to work with homeschooling on our street." So that will defer that question till later. Question from Heidi McCormick is, "So residential folk could install a system to run and store enough power for their own house use?"
That is correct. So in that case, it would be an accessory system, they're allowed in every zone, so you'd have an accessory use for your home.
And Kristen, we will come back to your question in a little bit. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to the councilors for other additional comments or action.
Ready, Mr. Chairman?
I am ready.
Move to approve the proposed amendments and additions as outlined above to Chapter 56 Unified Development Ordinance, Article 3 zoning districts, Article 14 definitions, and Article 8 performance standards. To establish standards to regulate the installation, operation, maintenance, and decommissioning and abandonment of solar energy systems and energy storage systems. These amendments are to become effective immediately upon council action.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Amy?
Sorry, no, we did just get something from the general website. Did you get that, Chairman Hamilton?
Yes, so question before we vote, just some clarification, what is the noise factor for solar storage?
Very minimal. There's also a requirement for fire safety to have a seven-foot opaque fence surrounding the development, which would minimize noise. They also typically try to keep the natural environment where they can. I mean, they do have to do some clearing to be able to have the, the sun hit the panels, which is part of it. But in the most cases, they work with the DEP to keep the property in its most natural form as possible.
There is a question from Heart of Ellsworth.
Yeah, I've got, I've got another one here. What hazards are associated for the public?
For the solar?
Yes.
Okay. We are, we work with the fire department, so they have to meet all of the requirements of NFPA. It's, the panels are not considered hazardous waste or hazardous by the DEP. So low risk.
Question came through, I've got several now coming through, so this is that delay. What about mixed-use buildings in the urban form?
Would they be allowed? Yes, so that, again, it would be an accessory. Would they be allowed? Yes. Um so that, again, it would be an accessory use to whatever building is there.
Okay, um and we hear from Chief Tepper about the safety.
Well, the big thing from our standpoint about the safety is is especially in the uh storage units. Uh the fire safety plan that we've been discussing with the developers, basically, obviously, it's uh an issue with electricity and. Uh we we're not supposed to use a lot of water on that, so one of the things that's. Uh we have to count on working is the fire suppression system in the storage units uh for the power. As long as that all works correctly, that we should be pretty good to go that way, as long as nothing escapes the the storage containers, if you will.
And another question is, so you wouldn't need fencing for residential rooftop mount?
No.
And then um a question about the documents. Where are the documents um so that the public can access them?
They are on, if you go to the city's um planning department webpage, there's a new tab called um ordinance updates. If you click on that, you'll see all of the links to the proposed amendments.
Okay, those are the questions we have. So we'll come back to, and I apologize as we go back and forth. We do have a motion in a second, so um now it's a discussion. No further discussion. Counselor Kaplan?
Um I'm just, again, concerned about the limitation on private owners. Um in urban areas or within the town itself, uh limiting, I mean, somebody might have a large house, but. You know, their needs are 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 different than somebody with a smaller house, and I'm just concerned that it may limit. What a private owner could or could not do with their own property. And private property rights are critical, and I wouldn't want a zoning ordinance to tell individual owner what they can and cannot do. And it also, in my opinion, benefits industry over um somebody, you know, an individual. Where we're forced to buy the electricity from the industry rather than have a large enough unit to suit somebody's individual needs if they have a large home.
So can I just clarify, um Counselor Kaplan, it you are allowed to have a system to um power your house. Anywhere would be an accessory use to your home, and therefore you would be allowed to have it um anywhere within the city as an accessory use.
And would you be allowed to store or sell power sell power back to the grid?
Um you wouldn't be directly connected into the substation at this point.
So entirely off grid.
Dwight, do you want to clarify that at all for me? Are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, uh I'm sorry. Um typically, you would you would not, you would be selling back to a Mera through a second meter located at your home. You're talking about a residential use, Counselor Kaplan?
Yes, neighborhood use.
Oh, it'd be a residential use, so what you would do, you'd be selling back to a Mera, any surplus electricity you would have. You would be allowed to have a battery bank at your home to sp- if you chose not to do that, to store that power for days where you had low on daylight.
We lost Counselor Kaplan. There she is.
Here I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, did you hear? Did you hear that response?
Uh I heard the ding ding from the thing. It goes ding dong and then you're there.
So uh what I said in a nutshell, private use is allowed, so you could have panels on your rooftop. And you could you could feed back into a mirror and sell back to a mirror, or you could also have a battery cell system set up at your home. So if you didn't know why to sell back to a mirror, which is getting harder to do, you could store. At your peak to use at your low time when it's when, you know, when you're not producing that much electricity because of overcast skies or storms or winter or things like that.
Okay, 'cause when I look at the um the chart on um, this is uh Chapter fifty-six, Article three, I I see a lot of no's. Um on the standalone for downtown urban uh neighborhood. And this just has a lot of no's and then yes under industrial and business park. And so it looks like it's um restrictive, you know, from the layperson looking at it, it would look like it's more restrictive for uh individuals.
Right, I don't think we looked at so much because I believe it was seventeen hundred and some square feet could be permitted through our office. Uh for which would typically be a residential use. So that's a lot of panels to have on one side of a roof to produce electricity. Now, a- as with all ordinances, there always is a little bit of tweaking that has to take place. You know, if this becomes an issue, it's certainly something we could come back to the council with in the future.
But right now, a- as it as it reads right now as being proposed. Um in the downtown and in the neighborhood zone, if you have a use, so if it's mixed use, commercial use. Um residential use, whatever use is there, you could have an accessory system that powers your use. Whatever use that is, that's an allowed use within that zone. You could also have a small-scale system, as Dwight said, that standalone in the downtown and in the neighborhood zone, that's up to one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet.
All right, uh let's see. Does. Another question, does this limit power storage and or use for outbuildings on private property? And is there a hazard association for home insurance policies if you are near any of these commercial property systems?
Um does this limit power storage and or use for outbuildings on private property? Uh if it's an accessory use. Your property, does this limit power storage and or use? Um I'm not really sure about the question. I'm I'm thinking that he's asking if um he'd be able to store power within an outbuilding on, if it's an accessory use. Um yet you would still be able to do it. You wouldn't be limited. Um and I am not aware about hazard association for home insurance policies if you're near these commercial property systems.
Or uh this was, it was in relation to a barn.
Okay, so I guess my question is, if you're s- if you're storing the power within your barn right now for a for a system. Um that would still continue to be allowed.
All right, and and then. So one, I it sounds as though there are already developers. Is the city looking to use electricity from these fields? And what benefit would this be to the city? How are solar fields taxed?
Is Larry still on here for the taxing of um solar? Hi, Larry.
Yes, hi, the uh the the equipment is actually uh tax exempt. Uh there's no tax for the equipment. The land and buildings would still be taxed, but the actual equipment would be tax exempt.
And then, I'm sorry, I missed the other part of the questions, Dale.
Um it says, it it sounds as though there are already developers, um meaning that um basically, the question is, are there already developers? And is the city looking to use electricity from um that new, those new developer fields? And what would be the benefit?
Uh those are private and they would be feeding into the Amera system. Um. I'm not sure about the city's usage, Dwight, if you want to talk about that.
I don't really think we would be tapping that directly. Um I know the other projects that are looking to come where we may be able to buy. Uh electricity at discount rates through them, but the this company that's looking to go out on Marrieville Road, they're private, they're gonna be selling to Amera. Uh to get the best rate, and they will have a s- small battery storage area there, so they could play the same game everyone else, with even the private people in this. At peak time, you're gonna store as much as you can and and reserve at points of demand.
Major call.
Remembered unmute. Uh just wanted to clarify because I got the question today when the uh planning board agenda was published uh by the Banger Daily News. The city has gone through an RFP process and is currently looking at taking advantage of the new solar legislation. And solicited proposals from a number of vendors, both within and outside of Ellsworth. This particular project is a private project on private property. There are other uh looking at the area as well. So uh two separate things.
Representative Grohowski?
Thank you again. Um my question um is, would the council or the planning board consider some small carve-outs within the urban zone? Um I'm sitting here looking at the um the zoning map and um the data showing where the substations are, and they're both in the urban zone. So I don't think that's what your average citizen thinks of when they think urban. Um and so I'm not sure that our zoning quite aligns in these cases with what uh would be best used for industry. And just so everyone is aware, um a company like Amera cannot own battery storage. They cannot uh own anything that is a generation-related. And so they would be looking to either um sell part of their parcel, lease part of their parcel, or use an adjacent parcel, but the land is quite. Uh as I just look at the map, especially by the dump, is really appropriate and also um quite accessible, I hope, by the fire department. Um we're not talking uh major side roads. I just wonder if the council would consider um doing carve-outs, or how how easy would it be to get a variance in these cases, I guess is the question.
Yeah, so as as Dwight said, and um I'll let the council speak, um but um as Dwight said, we can do some fine tuning and tweaking. Um after after the fact, um and come back to the council. Um after we workshop maybe this through with the fire department a little bit more, and as more comes out from um the National Fire Protection Act. They were considered coming out. Uh Richard, I don't know if they did come out with that section of NFPA. That regulates battery storage facilities and other energy storage systems that are standalone and large scale. Um but we can certainly have that conversation in the future. Like I said, we're trying to be conservative with isolating those uses. Um and then expanding after. Um I am aware that urban area surrounding there is prime. Um we did have an application um over a year ago now, um that was taken off the the planning board. For a standalone battery storage um facility there in that location. But like I said, we're trying to focus um focus if we can for that use, and then in the future, we could talk about expanding out. At that's at least um from staff and from the planning boards uh take at this point.
I just, I want to uh thank the public for your patience as we try to um navigate this new way of conducting a meeting. I also want to thank the council for your patience as we do that. Um it certainly makes it a little bit difficult, and I know we had jumbled up as we we do things, but I also. Need to make sure that we stick with the uh the Roberts rule. So right now, we do have a motion in a second. So right now, we have a motion. On what on item uh thirteen with a second, and um that's what we're gonna be voting on. And if there's any changes that anybody wants to make, then we can proceed to either with the another motion, but we need to stick with what's on the floor. So I just wanted to clarify that um as we continue the discussion within the council. Seeing no more questions, comments by the council. I don't see any more comments from the public. So we have a motion in seconds. Uh I'll start with um anyone opposed? Anybody abstaining? We have one abstention. Counselor Kaplan's abstaining, and all in favor?
Yes, sir.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um. And I just want to remind um Kristen, we will come back and address your question um later. But I'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, all items of the asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussions of these. Items unless the council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Number fourteen, council order number zero four two zero zero, request of the city clerk for appointment of democratic election clerks with terms to expire as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Complete list is available at the city clerk's department. Item fifteen, council order number zero four two zero zero one, request of the city clerk for appointment of republican election clerks. With terms to expire as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, complete list available at the city clerk's department. And item sixteen, council order number zero four two zero zero two, request of the city clerk for appointment of unenrolled election clerks. With terms to expire as of uh April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, complete list available at the city clerk's department. Do any counselors want to take any of those items separately? Seeing none? Their motion?
Moves to approve.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
You have a motion, second? Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I don't think anybody opposed, abstaining, motion passes. A new business, uh item seventeen, public hearing in action on the issuance of business licenses. First, Ellsworth Moose Lodge, number two six nine eight forty-seven Foster Street, renewal of a renewal of a city class B license, amusement pool tables. Liquor and vichyler, and a renewal of a state-class V club without catering malt, spiritus and finest liquor license. Uh public hearing is open. May I ask comment from the public? While we're waiting to hear that, do any counselors have any comments on that? I'm not seeing any comments, but I would also say if the public on any of these other items. If you have the agenda you plan on commenting, uh please feel free to submit your question now and get into. So with that, um is there a motion? Or wait, public hearing closed, is there a motion?
Move to approve. So I got.
That's your.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion passes. Finn's Irish Pub Incorporated, DBA Finn's Irish Pub, one fifty-six Main Street. For renewal of a city class B license, amusement, vichyler and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant class one, two, three, four, malt, spiritus, finest liquor license. Public hearing is open. Counselors, do you have any comments?
I I have one. As it stands, right now, these businesses such as Finn's can't open. Um do they pay their tax? When they finally do open? When they finally do open or are they expected to pay the tax now?
I'm sorry, what tax are you referring to?
Well, I'm sorry, not the tax, the liquor license.
They, they could pay it now or they could hold off. I'm just trying to get. The applications ready so that they can send them back on their own timing and they're not waiting for the council to approve anything. They will likely pay the state licensing fee closer to when they reopen.
Okay.
Can I also ask that you include authorization for the clerk if you so choose to sign those state licenses? Where it's going to be hard to get your signatures during this time?
Yeah, Heidi, we'll, we'll do that at the end to give you authorization to sign all of them.
Okay, thanks.
The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Anybody opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes. Ellsworth number one LLC DBA Hampton Inn, Ellsworth, 6 Down East Highway for renewal of a city lodging license. Public hearing is open. Councillors have any comments while we're waiting to see if anybody from the public? Not seeing anything coming in. We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I don't think there's anybody opposed or abstaining, motion passes. Ellsworth, RILCDBA, Ellsworth Ramada, 215 High Street for renewal of a city lodging license. Public hearing is open. City councillors, any comments? Not seeing anything from the public. I know we're on a delay, but I don't think anything's coming in. Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second, although a further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I.
Anyone opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes. Presswell Investments LLC DBA Airline Brewing Company, 173 Main Street for renewal of a city class B license, victueller liquor and amusement. And renewal of a state restaurant class three and four malt and vinous liquor license. We'll open the public hearing. Councillors have any comments? Seeing none coming in, we'll close the public hearing. There are motions.
Motion approved.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
And nobody opposed or abstaining, motion passes. And now. The authorization for the city clerk to sign the licenses on our behalf. Would anybody entertain a motion for that?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I.
Great idea.
Sign away, Heidi. All right, item 18, council order number 042003, request of the public works director to approve a lease agreement on an excavator for a term of up to six months. At an estimated cost of $4,500 per month.
Good evening. Am I unmuted?
You are.
Okay. Good evening, councillors. Lisa Zeklich, public works director. I'm here tonight to request renting for the duration of approximately six months, a 135 size excavator. As you know, in the original agenda, the original price when we went out looking for prices was approximately $4,500 a month. Due to lower demand for excavators and with the COVID crisis, we reached back out to the companies we had originally got prices from. And were able to get them to reduce the price to approximately $2,700 a month. With a hundred dollar each way pickup drop off fee, which originally was a hundred and fifty dollars each way. It's a John Deere 135 excavator. It is fairly new. I believe it's only a couple of years old. And it comes with both a cleanup bucket and a digging bucket. This is something we do every year because. We had to sell our excavator, I think almost two years ago when I first started. Due to the fact that we figured it was a better investment to rent one every year than to go out and purchase a new one. Over the course of 10 years, we'd actually be saving money by renting one. So. I think that's where we're at. Any questions?
Certainly. All right, Lisa, I see on one of the slips, the one from Eagle, that there is a roller mentioned in there, but I see no mention of that in your request.
Correct, we.
To be, to be asked, there must be some need for it. And I feel it probably is at certain times. I know we have none, small or large.
Yep. So the roller is something we were looking at renting for a few months this spring, right after grading roads and right after doing calcium. And three months of the roller is within David's approval limit. So it's nothing we are necessarily going to bring to council, but something we were looking at potentially doing.
All right. So you are going to get something available. It would make a big difference that. All the work done grading and taking care of those roads, if you don't pack it before you leave, it pretty much. Goes away. It, it offsets the good job that they do.
Yep. Yep.
Other questions, comments, councillors?
I would just like to say, well done in getting that almost half price.
Yeah, they. You know, we went back and said, hey, look. You know, we know business is going to be down. Is there anything you can do for us? And I was genuinely surprised when I came back that much lower.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request to go into a rental agreement with Eagle Rental for a 135 class excavator and attachments that are costing $2,700 per month. For a duration of approximately six months to be paid for through the highway general fund account.
I got it. I'm assuming public discussion is closed?
Yeah, this is, this one is not a public hearing and no one's. Said anything.
I.
There are a motion a second. Any further discussion? Is there a comment, councillor Kaplan that came in to you?
Uh, nope.
Okay. All those in favor?
I.
I.
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
Item 19, council order number 042004, request of the public works director to extend the contract for. Center and sideline striping to Lucas Striping LLC and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Um, good evening again. So the city is an urban compact, which means the roads located within the. The city as well as our, our municipal owned roads as well as the DOT roads within the urban compact. We are responsible for painting the lines and the symbols. In the past, we've had a contract for. What you call the long lines, which are the main lines, separate from a contract. For the symbols, which are your arrows and your only isn't that kind of thing. My intention for this is I would like to extend the contracts for Lucas Striking. From, they said they could do it for the same price they did it last year. And by extending this, right now, the two contracts were three year contracts and they were staggered dates. One was like Lucas Striking would be up, but Jordan would have been next year. I'm hoping to extend this for one year and then next year potentially put. Both the long line and the symbol stripes or symbol painting out as one contract. The people we've used for a long time are supposed to be retiring after this year. So that opens up the possibility to. Kind of lump it all together and potentially have one contractor do the whole thing.
Councillors, questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I.
I. Motion passes enthusiastically. All right, item 20, council order number 042005, request of the city manager to reallocate $20,000 from the grant application funds. Account 9090900-590198 to the COVID-19 account. 15-49076 to be used for business recovery efforts in response to economic impacts brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic. I would just introduce this of saying that. This was a discussion I had with manager Cole. After hearing the business community in terms of the, the real concern about bringing people back as their businesses open. Being able to promote the city as a whole. And in some way for the, the city to support businesses, knowing that we had this account that will be unspent funds. Of being able to reallocate and provide some support. So that was the thought behind it. Major Cole, I don't know if you have anything additional that you want to add to that?
Certainly as our economy reopens with the rest of the state, country and world. Our small businesses are going to be hard strapped for money to do marketing. We have had some general discussions. There's no specific plan at this point. But looking at it is primarily seed money. Open for business, working with like the main tourism association or other groups. To re-center the community in people's eyes. If the council's in favor of this, this evening, I would say it as a directive to the manager and staff to go out and work with our local businesses. Work with our state partners and local partners, the chamber of commerce and others to look at. What we can do to work together. You know, to take that first step back out into the real economic world when this is back in business. So. It's a start. It, it, I think it's a good start and we go work out the deep details and bring them back.
Yeah, how, how will the funds be allocated and spent? That will become before council, small committee or who will decide what it is spent on?
Anyway, you would like councillors, I would see you bringing it back certainly to the finance committee or the full council, although. Timing wise, yeah, we don't know exactly when this is going to be rolling out, but we'd want to be able to move. You know, fairly quickly, but certainly come back to a special meeting as well. However, our, over the council would choose.
I'd be in favor of having it come back to the full council. For discussion before that much money is spent. Yeah. That's one of my hesitations. It's a small amounts or one thing on bits and pieces, but. If it's a large sum, then it should have more than just a small overlook.
Yep, cer- certainly. And this would put it in a, a economic recovery budget, but we should bring it back for, for your approval. Of any plan that would go forward.
Discussion questions? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, you ready?
I am.
Okay, there is a question.
No.
From Matthias Kamen.
How will, how will local businesses be able to access these funds? So I can answer from the perspective of what we were talking about is that manager Cole will work with his team and connection with the business community. And to develop a plan and a proposal, it's not necessarily individual business to business. Those details are yet to be worked out and that's, as we were just talking about, that's where it will come back to the council based on that plan that gets developed.
Mr. Chairman. Move to reallocate $20,000 from the grant application funds, 9090900-590198. To the COVID-19 account, 15-49076. To be used for business recovery efforts in response to economic impacts brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion?
We do still have questions from the public coming in. This one from John Stein.
Relative to collective budgets of Ellsworth Small Business, this is a small amount. Of course, if the city puts it in a concerted community effort, it will be very meaningful. Are there any particular areas that the council members would like to see these funds go towards? Again, I would say that's, that's that process piece where manager Cole will be working with the business community and the council. Will certainly be able to share input that way. That will be a collective process and. Will encourage that kind of involvement. Any further discussion, Major Cole?
I just add your action tonight is reallocating budget funds. And again, the, 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 the meat and potatoes of this will come back to the council. After we've worked it through with the community and the small businesses in the area and try state partners and figure that out.
So motion second, all in favor?
I.
I.
It was unanimous?
Unanimous.
All right, I just want to, before we go on the last item, just want to address the question that came in. Are there any considerations currently to expand broadband in the city? If so, where? We are seriously struggling to work and homeschool on North Street without the ability to access high speed internet. Major Cole, if you want to?
Yes, as you know, the city threw a northern borders grant, I think five years ago. Invested in three miles of gig level. Trunk line in the city of Ellsworth that goes right into the three ring binder. So the city has invested in this area. There are another, other providers in the area as well. But it's all about the economics of, of, you know, density of population. To make it worthwhile service provider. So certainly out in the more rural areas of Ellsworth, it's very challenging. We hear it regularly from people. Living on the lakes who would like to get access to cable or other services. I would. You know, that's certainly one of the key infrastructure pieces that any community needs to look at and. There, this COVID outbreak has certainly highlighted dependency on it. And I think when this is all over, we're going to have a lot of, have a lot of lessons learned and hopefully. We can take that and work with state and private funders to see what can be done to. Extend that web out further. IT manager. Ingles is cer- is certainly available to speak as well. He is our manager, the called the Kobe system. And Jason, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to this. Or whether you can, if I'm in from the other room.
I don't have much to add. We did check with.
I don't have much to add. We did check with Union River Telephone about North Street because they have fiber coming through there, but they aren't providing service to that area. And yeah, but we we have no plan currently.
Jason, do you know, and I don't know if I'm pronouncing this all pronounceable, is is it Rivenet?
Rivenet, that's Union, that's Union River Telephone.
That's it, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that was, and first I asked the question, did follow up, spoke with Jason and did follow up on that and get that answer. Okay, thank you. Alright, so item twenty one. Discussion update on the role of emergency medical services within the Ellsworth Fire Department. Just wanted to bring forward that under our non-transplantation license, there has been a complaint filed about related to response. That complaint is being reviewed and addressed by our council. So at this point, it's it's not appropriate to address tonight, but did want to put that out there. And that will be followed up with our council. But this item really is about the fact that it became as a surprise that we, or some of us, that we had actually had a license. And so we wanted to kind of backtrack around the training that was provided, what the license is, what it obligates us as a city to do, because there are some changes that go beyond what we've discussed in the past. So I'll turn it over to manager Cole and Chief Tupper to explain those elements of it.
Chief Tupper, do you want to start out?
Well, I'll try to bring a little bit of history of, I guess, how we we got to everything that we've done. If you recall, back in April of two thousand eighteen, when county ambulance closed their doors, we had discussion, actually prior to that, the city had discussion. Capital ambulance, which is now Northern Light Transport, Medical Transport. That discussion started with the evolution of what what is going to be the future of EMS in Ellsworth. And what would be that outcome? Discussions followed from that start to would the city have any position in providing EMS? Would the city have any position in working alongside of an EMS company or where are we going to go? Would that be left completely to a private entity? Through future discussions, Northern Light Medical Transport is now housed with us, as you all know. And we, from the fire department, we use continue to assist as we have for many years. When I say many years, I can recall right at the very onset of my career, thirty plus years ago, we're doing this, going out into the field and assisting the ambulance in the field. Recently during those discussions, if you recall, we were seeing many times when there was a lack of EMS in the city or delays of having an ambulance. Police Department told the patients in their cruises at times and long periods of time for an ambulance to show up when we were dispatched to go out and assist somebody. So that prompted the the discussions at lower levels to what is the future of EMS? I graduated to a full appointed committee to look at what are the needs for the city of Ellsworth. And continued on to hear into discussions of what we do in the field. At one point, we were, we we had staff that were licensed EMTs that assisted in the field because it was the right thing to do for a particular individual when an ambulance wasn't immediately available. That started and prompted the discussion of, actually, that started with a complaint on that one particular call. And it was looked into to try to determine how can we protect number one, our staff employee? Because he was practicing under his own license while working for the fire department on a response, and that put us in a conspiracy situation. So we prompted that with discussion and led down the road to needing to be gaining license as a first responder, non-transport. That also prompted the need for insurance writers to protect us, both the individual and the city. Then through further discussions, we we head with the city, we look at training for the remaining staff in our department. But we've had that training. We we did apply for a license to cover the city and our staff that were individually licensed at the time. We gained the insurance coverage through Main Municipal Association. And then completed the training for the remaining staff in in our department. With the one exception on the train in spite of that, one of seven of us that took that class was able to fill the national registry testing and license. The other six of us still need to do that, but with the COVID nineteen, that kind of shut down the testing sites. So that's where we're at. With this complaint that Jack Hamilton discussed, it has come to light that we should be responding to all medical calls in Ellsworth by the by virtue of holding this license. We will state the back when we started the discussion. My understanding of the need for this license was, as I just stated, strictly to cover the individual employee holding an EMP license and to protect the city. If we didn't, and my understanding at that time was if we didn't have this license from the main EMS board, we were practicing medicine without a license. So therefore, we needed that license. It was not necessarily understood that by virtue of holding that license, we're now obligated to go to all EMS calls in the city of Ellsworth. And by default, Fletcher's Landing, if we cover that area. So we've come to this understanding and because we know this and I currently hold in the license, that is what we are doing presently. That could be changed at your discretion. But if we don't go to the EMS calls in Ellsworth at this point, as a first responder, we would be negligent of our duties by virtue of the the license that we hold. I'm sure I left out parts and pieces, so please ask some questions.
Officer Lynch.
Chief, we would be the primary responder? Or would we be responding in conjunction with Northern Light?
Very good question. We would still be responding in conjunction with Northern Light. The ambulance itself, if if the RCC took a medical call, a nine one on call, their first response is going to be calling MedCom to have the ambulance respond. The second call is going to be having us dispatch. Whether they do it or our Ellsworth dispatches dispatch them.
And this, it does not matter what the call is about?
That is correct. However, we do have the ability to work with the ambulance crews. Be that if if they're both at the station at the same time, the call comes in for a a lesser call. And the ambulance is fine with it. My understanding, and this is one of the things that we still got to get some clarification through main EMS. But my understanding is we can, working along with them, make that judgment call that we may not have to respond to that particular call. If the ambulance wasn't available or they were already committed, we would go and start that first response and then the ambulance would meet us there and that they are listed as the transport ambulance for us, so they have to come anyway, but they're not going to leave us hanging.
In a previous meeting, there was discussion about Fletcher's Landing. And the number of calls there over the past, I I want to say it was ten years, was negligible. And so therefore, the cost was really low. Pardon the clock. If if we have to respond to all calls now, including Fletcher's Landing, will there also be a charge to them to recover our cost?
Regardless of Fletcher's Landing?
Yes.
So when we sat with them to renew the contract for fire coverage for Fletcher's Landing, this topic came up. They actually had requested us to have EMS coverage there as well. At that time, we weren't in this position, so we based it only on fire coverage.
Right.
Function that we were moving towards that, and if we did, there would be an adjustment to the fee, correct? And and that agreement was made for one year's time. That renewed in June, I believe, help me out, Tammy, June, I believe it is, excuse me, July. And that understanding was going to be there that if we didn't provide that, there would be an adjustment in the fee.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Officer Kaplan.
Is your license for just basic or is it for ACLS and TALs as well?
We we hold a first responder license that is, excuse me, I stand corrected, we hold a basic EMT license, yes.
So there's no ACLS and TALs?
No.
Okay, so you need Northern Light because they're advanced?
Correct.
Okay, so you guys are basically the jaws of life and then the transport shows up when they're needed.
You could say that in one way, yes.
If if we're responsible to respond, I'm at basically at the direction of Northern Light. Are we're then providing a service for them? And if we're providing a service for them, what are the provisions and contractually that we need to discuss in terms of being compensated for that?
So I think that's certainly a discussion that needs to take place. Let me try to clear up one statement. We're not we're not licensed to provide a service for them. We're licensed to provide a service for the community alongside of them as a first responder unit. They are listed as our transport agency. Obviously, we don't have an ambulance. We go to assist somebody. Or augment what the ambulance company would do when they are there. Sometimes it takes more than just the crew that's on an ambulance to help. But certainly, I agree, there's the potential that there's no question, we are augmenting the ambulance by helping, by just giving hands there, but the the assistance primarily starts with the citizen. So there are avenues to be able to recoup some of those costs, I believe there is. What those costs exactly should be and are is something that we need to look on to try to fair and just.
And manager Cole?
Yep. And I want to bring it back around to before this wrinkle with the license came up. Back late fall, early winter, Chief Tupper and his command structure approached me about an expanded role for the fire department in this area, given the fact that was it seven or eight people, Chief Tupper, that had been trained as basic EMTs? And I reminded them that when the council approved this funding, I believe, a year ago at this, at the April meeting, that the idea was to, if we're going to require our people to be out there on the scene, that they ought to have appropriate level of training to do it. And that if the fire department was looking for an expanded role, it needed to go through the proper process, starting with the committee, the Public Safety Planning Committee, and ultimately the budget process and the council, if there are budget implications. So I would suggest that this needs to go to the Public Safety Committee. There was a meeting scheduled and that was for our world get turned upside down. And it was one of the meetings that was canceled the week after the governor's emergency proclamation. So it needs to go back there and go through the process light of day. And I think, Chief Tupper, you agree with that. As for the license, we are working to straighten out this complaint. It's nothing that can't be undone. This license could be relinquished within a month's period. You have to get file a notice and do such. It made you be as simple as arrangements of Northern Light so that those calls where we're not needed, that we can can be dismissed on those calls. Investigate, but the decision ultimately is the council's decision where we go with this.
Officer Miller.
How much more staff are you going to need to meet these requirements of twenty four hours a day service as the responding unit?
Don't see any immediate need to change our staffing levels. The license, the understanding license also is as an as of if we are on a an incident, an EMS incident, and we get a fire call that comes in and callback staff could either handle the fire call or we could release people from an EMS call as as available. I don't see any immediate need for additional people.
The counselors, if I may, this is Chief Moser, the police department. I I do want to add that although Richard may not see any immediate need for fire personnel, we may need to consider dispatch personnel because we're talking in if they were to respond to all medical calls for the city of Ellsworth, you're talking an additional somewhere in the neighborhood of a thousand or more calls for service. And those calls for service, as it stands, are going to have to be toned out and controlled through our dispatch center, which is currently manned by one person from seven in the morning until eleven PM at night. And they already have a pretty commanding job just to handle the amount of telephone traffic and radio traffic for law enforcement and what they currently do for fire. So if you add that amount of workload onto individuals who are already stretched pretty thin, I think we'd need to seriously consider that as a potential need for increased staffing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Officer Lynch.
Chief Moser, as a follow up question. I see by the state rules that if we go this route, that a report has to be made on each call out. A paper report has to be generated. Would that be the responsibility of the dispatch? Would that be responsibility of fire, police? And do we have the manpower to do a report on each call out?
So, so I'll let Richard address that because the majority of the reporting is going to have to be done by the fire department. That being said, the dispatchers, like they do with fire, other fire calls and like they do with police calls, I'm sure there would be an increased need for that dispatch to put information into that cat into the spillman card, which will be generated so that the fire service, the fire department will have that information to complete whatever reporting they need to do specifically for main EMS. The reporting system that they'll have to do for main EMS is separate from what we do in spillmen. So that I'll leave up to Chief Tupper to address.
That is correct. The individual in charge of the crew that goes out on an EMS run is the one responsible for doing a EMS report through MIFs. Which is the main reporting system. which is the main reporting system.
Chief, also, one other question I see in the state rules, pilot projects are available. It would be a one-year program, renewable up to three years. Is that something that, in the interim, that Ellsworth could take advantage of while we sort this out?
I'm sorry, Counselor, you broke up on my end at the beginning of that question.
The pilot projects that are available to be deemed a pilot project. While we sort this out, would that be something that we could take advantage of?
I don't have an answer for that question. I would have to look into that to know more about it.
Okay.
Counselor Grindel.
So I was going back through some of the council meeting minutes and my recollection of how we got to this point. And, you know, at first, the education request was involved in a much bigger discussion about EMS services and ambulance services and that sort of thing. And it was very clear to previous council that, that it should be brought forward with discussions by the public, with the public and with the council, because there's a lot of different moving parts. Case in point, to Chief Moser, the communication issue. There were just a lot of things that still needed to be ironed out. And so the education request came forward again to us as a liability concern, because we were already going out to these calls and, and responding. But yet, we could be held liable for doing so. So that's how we approved it, because we were basically saying, you know, we're already doing this. And so we need to therefore cover ourselves with this education. But now, you know, with this whole license issue and the going out on every call, we're back to the beginning of all these other questions that still need to be addressed. So I guess I don't really know what our next step should be. Clearly, it needs more discussion. There could potentially be staffing issues with communication. And what, what are all the unknowns that, that are out there? I mean, it was clearly, we got the education. And then it was unknown that we needed to get the license. And then once we did get the license, it was unknown that we needed to go to every call. So I just think there's more work that needs to be done. And I don't know, I, I don't really think we have an objective tonight. We can't say, do we, Dale? Do we have, we can't, we're not making a motion. We're just discussing where we're at, correct?
Correct. We, we can set a plan forward in terms of where we need to go with this, but there's no item on the agenda for a formal vote.
So I guess I, my point is, there's still a lot of work to be done. A lot of discussions to be had with the public, with the different departments. And we're already in violation, so.
I have a question.
I have a question too, Dale.
All right. So let me, let me go. Counselor Phillips and then Counselor Kaplan.
Hey. Chief Tupper. Five years ago, before we ran into the situations that we did with the ambulance leaving, did, at the time, county ambulance take care of all the calls and this type of things without us having to be involved?
I would say no, because I can remember assisting ambulance several times continuously. It's always been there. Back in April of 2018, when this discussion started going, was when we were starting to hear that the Bureau Labor and Maine Municipal was looking, and Maine EMS was looking closely at fire departments who go out and assist. And a lot of the individuals in the departments, even though they held an EMS license, the organization they were working for was not licensed. So that's where the whole issue of the liability and working outside of our scope of practice.
Is that right?
So, Chief Tupper, did, did you, so I understand why you're saying we're here now. But at point before the, everything started to go in different directions with the ambulance service, we didn't respond as an EMS, if I remember right. And I'm assuming that the ambulance service took care of these things.
We didn't respond.
Did the rules change?
We didn't respond as an EMS service, but we responded as a fire department because we were toned out to go help them. And we did. And that evolved into doing EMS things because many firefighters come from an EMS background or have shared EMS background. So it's, a lot of the same has happened for many, many years. We've become a little bit wiser to the fact that, you know, we need to do things correctly.
So if you relinquish the license and Northern Lights becomes responsible for this, will the citizens of Ellsworth be served?
I have to say no, because the, I can assure you that we're going to get called to go out and assist the ambulance. And if you, we relinquish this license, we're back to the beginning of this discussion where we've got people that hold a license in their back pocket, an EMS license individually. And when we go and assist the ambulance or do whatever we do in the field, the moment that that individual does something from a medical perspective, working for me that day, now we're in the same mess that we did to begin with. So I guess my answer to that is if, if we choose not to provide EMS in any capacity, then we're going to, if we end up in the field, we're going to have to be extremely careful and resist the effect to try to help somebody. I, I think this warrants, and I've asked for many times for committee meetings and workshops to really have all the players present to sit down and discuss this out. I agree wholeheartedly with your questions and statements that there are causes and effects. I don't disagree with Chief Moser that this does affect the dispatch. And it can affect them greatly, but that's a piece of the puzzle. Just like our things are pieces of that puzzle. And if we don't have all the players, and I would highly recommend someone from Maine representing them at this meeting. So I'm not guessing on anything, any of these answers. We can get it straight from the horse's mouth. You can have the questions that you guys all need to, to ask, and we can get it all out on the table and decide at the end of the day, based on good factual in some information, is this a route we're going to take or do we not?
So, Chief Tupper, with your knowledge of the surrounding communities and their fire departments, how many of the surrounding communities would you or do you know of that are certified in the basic EMT and have these, have this license?
To my knowledge, there are two departments, Trenton and Lemoine, that don't have a first responder license. All others do.
Bar Harbor, Boxport, they all have this license.
Bar Harbor does transport EMS. They have their own ambulance. Boxport.
So they all have this now and this is something everyone's been doing.
Rep. For quite some time.
Counselor Kaplan.
Um, well, it, it's more than just having EMS available. Northern Light, because they have ACLS and PALS availability, they're actually called by the hospitals to do inter-facility transports. And a lot of times, they're not even available for a call. They may leave a basic provider there to handle a basic call, but that's, with this license, that's nothing that the, that our people couldn't do as far as, as being able to provide coverage to the community. The whole reason that they have the basic life support measures is because if they go to a scene, any scene, whether it's a fire or a car accident or whatever, and they're the first on team and they come in contact with any patient, they're the, they are the lifesaver. They're the first ones providing CPR. You know, then ambulance arrives or Northern Light might arrive to actually transport the patient. But before, before they're even transported, somebody has to save their lives. And it's the Ellsworth Fire Department that does the CPR and the initial life-saving measures. No, they are not ACLS certified, which is Advanced Cardiac Life Support, but they can provide basic life support until Northern Light shows up.
So I'll echo Counselor Grindel and Chief Tupper's comments. The, the, the issue I don't think is a matter of, for the council around public safety. That's been the discussion from day one in terms of when we first started talking about this previous council around when we had a change in EMS and we worked in terms of developing a contract with Northern Light in a partnership. This was all about making sure that the community had the right resources. What is missing at this point is that this is complicated from the perspective of how do we get to the ideal place with all these different licenses, roles, responsibilities? Who is responsible for what? What are the requirements? And do we have a system that's, that's worked out so that all partners know exactly what is, what they're required to do and how that relationship operates? This is different than when we entered into the agreement with Northern Light. There is a change. This license does require something that we did not talk about. And, and when I say we collectively, I know that, that the firefighters, we all received a, a letter in terms of, I would say, they're in full support of this. And, but we need to have an opportunity to bring the right group of people together to talk about how do we pull this all together in a way that works? There are some additional positions. There are some additional costs. None of that's been discussed and we can't just ad hoc this kind of change. We need to have a plan. We need to put numbers to it so that we can make decisions that's informed and not just reactive. And so I think we're at that place where I agree, we need to get the committee. Obviously, we've been faced with some challenges in pulling together those resources. But that would be my recommendation, that we pull the EMS committee together, pull in the right partners that need to be at the table and get together a proposal that gets in front of the council for a larger discussion.
Can we arrange a Zoom meeting for the EMS committee?
Absolutely.
I think that would work very well, actually, to be able to have an opportunity to bring in somebody from Maine EMS so they don't have to travel and we could have all the key players in a meeting like this to be able to discuss all the different things that one might not think of, but a bunch of us could all have it all put together in a good package.
Manager Cole?
Yeah, I, I would just note too, as you recall, Counselor Kaplan, we had set up a meeting and it was just before everything happened. They were, I didn't even know what Zoom was at that point. So we can certainly pull that together.
Zoom was what we used to watch on public television right after Sesame Street.
Heather, you probably never saw that.
Oh, yes, I did.
So, does, if, everybody comfortable with that direction in terms of taking this issue, getting that committee together so that with the hope that maybe next meeting, we can at least get an update on status, but look for some, hopefully some direction?
Yes, that sounds great.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Just one final note. On any meeting of that type, we will post it. And certainly with this technology, you know, all counselors are invited to attend. I mean, the committee will function on its own, but, and one of the advantages of the technology is we can pipe people in from Augusta with the Maine EMS and others. We'll go ahead and do that.
And, and just in terms of comment, but I think we would support this is to have the voice of the firefighter represented as well. Have a representative.
Yeah. I mean, it's a public meeting, so, you know, we can get up to what, 500 people on these Zoom calls? Can't all talk at once, mind you, but we'll figure it out.
Okay. Anything else on that? All right, item 22, adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, John, for making it fun. And thank you again for the public, for your patience for this process and also the council. This, it's hard to keep kind of that same process. We've had to ad hoc a lot, but we'll get through it and eventually we'll be back in a room together and, and that will be fun.
Thanks, Dale.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.